I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
We welcome you to the Orange County School Board meeting. If you notice behind us, there are some exciting pictures. You'll be hearing about that later, but we just asked that you give us a big hand because we were a winner. You will be hearing about that and not to hold you up for tonight. We ask for the courtesy of the audience and the board members that you please silence at this particular time your cell phones. Tonight, we are going to be recognizing Orlando Orthodontist Dr. Andre Baptiste, who is a very good friend of the Orange County Public Schools. Through the Foundation for Orange County Public Schools, Dr. Baptiste is donating more than $23,000, including match funds to be used for STEM grants at 15 of our schools. And you can give that a round of applause. Dr. Baptiste is joined tonight by Michelle Probin Sterna. Okay, and I hope I got that right for her. And Dr. Baptiste, Practice Manager and Marketing Director, and Eddie, and I'm supposed to know Eddie Sanabria. Did I get that right, Mr. Eddie? I was calling. All righty, did I get it right? Sanabria, I got it wrong. And I'm supposed to know that, but when I go to the bank, I just say Eddie. So we love that. Okay, but the Foundation Executive Committee Board Members, forgive me for that, and Vice President, Risk Management with Central Florida Educators Federal Credit Union. Could all three of our guests please stand? Okay, and let's give them a round of applause. And thank you, Joey. We're going to ask at this time if Dr. Baptiste can step to the podium and lead us in our moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
We thank you so very much. The Board greatly appreciates your donation to 15 of our schools promoting advancement of STEM studies, basically working with science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Can you please share with us more about your commitment to promoting STEM studies in Orange County Public Schools?
Well, thank you, Ms. Gordon. I'd like to congratulate the School Board on the award you guys received. You know, a couple of years ago, we wanted to come up with a way that we could support the schools directly that support us. And we came up with something that we called the Baptiste Scholarship Funds. Actually, the Baptiste Orthodontic Scholarship Fund. And thanks to Orange County Public Schools, we were able to make that a reality. And basically, for every student that starts treatment with us, we give back $100 to their school. We chose science because I'm a bit of a science nerd myself. And we wanted to sort of direct it in one specific place so we could kind of see a consequence for what we were doing. You know, and we're just thankful that we have the opportunity to be able to do this. If we can create, you know, or can help create a couple more science nerds, then, you know, at least we've done something, I think. You know, once again, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity.
Well, we most certainly thank you. And not only do we thank you, but we thank your entire staff. What we would like to do, we are very, very proud of you. We're very proud of what you have done for the 15 schools in Orange County, and not just those, but other schools that you've worked in and it helped as well. If you could please step to the board table with your Practice Manager and your Foundation Executive Committee Board Member, Mr. Eddie. Okay? We would love to shake your hands and just thank you for all your hard work and your commitment to the children of Orange County Public Schools. Our Board would love to greet you and your staff at this time. And while you're coming, we have a certificate of recommendation, okay, for you. We thank you so very much. And this is on behalf of the Orange County School Board to put on your wall. Thank you so much, Ms. Gordon. Okay, will you please join me, audience, in giving Dr. Baptiste and his staff a round of applause for their commitment and the Orange County Foundation? We thank you so very much. So we're not going to ask you to stay unless you want to, but we would love to have you. So what we will do at this time, we will go ahead with the rest of the meeting. Okay? So at this time, Dr. Jenkins, I'm going to turn over to you for the strategic plan update. And I believe that is Dr. Vicky Cartwright that will do that for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we are recognizing, as part of one of your board resolutions tonight, we are recognizing September 29th through October 10th as Disability History and Awareness Weeks. We thought it was an appropriate time for Dr. Cartwright to bring you a strategic plan update on exceptional student education. Dr. Cartwright.
Good afternoon, good evening, Board. It's a pleasure to see you here today. As we have our board update coming up on the screen, what we will have for you is a couple of areas that we are going to highlight for you tonight. And it's going to be with meeting state standards as well as our graduation rate. So within our strategic plan update, of course, we do have for you the definition of rigor because this is something that is very dear and very important. And it's the stretching of our students academically through tasks and our activities that demonstrate levels of thinking and the complexity to which a knowledge is applied. Under our meeting state standards, where we're looking at our scorecard, we were able to pull out specifically data that's related to students with disabilities. And so when we're looking at what is the percentage of students with disabilities performing at the proficient level and above in reading, what you will notice is that for over the past four years, between 2010 and 11 and 2013-14, we have improved one percentage point. For between the 12-13 and the 13-14 school year, we did maintain the equal percentage. When we look at the percentage of students with disabilities performing at the proficiency level and above in mathematics, again, we also maintained from last year to this year at 29 percentage points. When we look at the percentage of students with disabilities performing at the proficiency level and above in writing, we did have a marked increase from 28 percentage points all the way up into 34 percentage points between the 12-13 and the 13-14 school year. When we're looking at our strategy that supports this particular goal, it's provide all schools with the components necessary for maximizing relationships to ensure safe learning and working environments. Specifically, we identified providing professional development and concrete models for schools to replicate positive school climate and culture through the multi-tier system of supports for behavior. The ESE Behavior Support Team focused on providing increased training district-wide in the area of crisis prevention intervention during the 12-2013-14 school year. This is also known as CPI. And CPI provides teachers as well as other personnel with strategies to verbally de-escalate aggressive students. Over 1,500 staff members from 171 schools were trained. In addition to our CPI, our ESE Behavior Support Team also partnered with Flip Fiddlers to increase our CHAMPs training to 13 school teams interested in implementing this program as their school-wide positive behavior support system. We trained over 225 staff members at 40 school sites in the CHAMPs model this past year. To continue on with our standardized support and professional development, we provided professional development for all district employees and collaborative organizations regarding meeting the needs of students with disabilities as well as gifted learners. The ESE Professional Development Modules available to OCPS administrators, instructional staff, non-instructional personnel, and parents continue to serve as a model for providing critical information needed to support students with disabilities. Approximately 700 district administrators and over 9,000 teachers have completed these modules. Modules were adopted as a part of the district requirements for administrators completing the Preparing New Principals Academy. We also released this past year a module focusing on the gifted learners as a requirement for all administrators. Additional modules focused on the principles of universal design for learning and support facilitation as a service delivery model and were available this summer. In addition to our online professional development opportunities, we also provided approximately 343 training sessions during the 2013-14 school year and providing curriculum support for general education as well as special education settings. We also provided various methods of behavior support for students with disabilities and areas of compliance related to writing quality IEPs and direct training as well as support for district staffing specialists. As a portion of having a laser-like focus and looking at how we provide to the needs of our gifted students, there are six, excuse me, there are six additional elementary schools that are providing gifted services to their students beginning this school year from last year. Those six schools are Andover, Bonneville, Forsyth Woods, John Young, Tildenville, and Union Park Elementary Schools. In addition, this past year, the School Board authorized the expansion of the universal screening for gifted from Title I schools and to all schools throughout the entire district. When we looked at that, from Title I schools, we had 6,375 students that were screened. Of that, 428 students were recommended for further evaluation. That's approximately 7% of those students that were screened from Title I schools are now identified for further evaluation. For our non-Title I schools, there were 5,112 students screened. From that number, 201 students were recommended further. Approximately, that equates to 4% of that population being screened and being identified for further evaluation at this point in time. Continuing with the strategy, but one of the subgroups under that is going to be increased parental and community awareness of OCPS opportunities for involvement. This is one of the areas for which we are very proud to have a partnership with our parents in Orange County Public Schools. We have our ESE Parent Support Team. In fact, you'll hear from a couple of them later tonight. They continued their efforts of expanding the outreach to parents of students with disabilities through a variety of methods. Of course, we had our annual Pulse Meeting, which was a conference targeted for families of students with disabilities experienced, had as great a success with approximately 500 attendees this past year. We also have our ESE Family Forums, were presented in the West Learning Community, and they're being expanded to all learning communities this year because it was so successful in that learning community. Our PST members served on committees that went from a variety of different events. It went from our Transition Advisory Board. You also had your Family Cafe, the Governor's Summit on the Disabilities, Nathaniel's Hope for Make 'Em Smile, Buddy Walk, our Down Syndrome and Autism Clinic at Howard Phillips Center, as well as our Annual Card Conference and our Autism Society of Greater Orlando, the Buddy Walk. Under our area of graduation and dropout rate, what we have available to us is looking at was the graduation rate for students with disabilities. And I'm proud to present that we went up, increased from 49% to 54%. Strategies, what are we doing in order to help that continue to increase? We provide increased opportunities to meet graduation requirements. Specifically, we look at our high school high-tech programs and we look at our transition site programs. Our high school high-tech program posted a 98% graduation rate for the 2012-13 school year. Of the 2013-14 high school high-tech students, we had 87 students attend Leadership Camp, 36 students completed a paid summer internship, four students won a scholarship, two went on to trips to Washington DC with Compact. We also had one student participate in a youth leadership forum. And as you can see with our high school high-tech numbers, the sites have now been dramatically increased. Last year, we had 12 sites. We now have a high school high-tech program in every one of our high schools this year. And our enrollment has doubled. It's gone from 205 to 410 students being served in that program. With our number of transition sites and student enrollment, these are for more for like your more severely cognitively impaired students. So these traditionally would be those students who would graduate with a special diploma. And you can see from our number of transition sites, we have continuously been improving on that. We're now up to 18 sites this school year, and our enrollment has also continuously increased. When we look at our transition site expansion during the 2013-14 school year, the number of transition sites increased by seven. We had Florida Hospital of Orlando, Goodwill Industries of Central Florida with an expansion of a second classroom, the Siemens Energy. And then, as you can see, we now have partnership within Orange County Public Schools with multiple departments. We have facilities planning and design, food nutrition services, the print shop, as well as transportation. And I'm proud to say for this year so far, because we always are looking to grow these programs, and with our transition sites, the numbers do fluctuate throughout the year because we're constantly looking for students to put into the sites as well as looking for those opportunities, the partnership. So starting the school year, we have an increase by two. And this is with our grounds and maintenance in Orange County as well as here at the Ronald Blocker Educational Leadership Center. There will be many opportunities for you to have interactions with our students here at the building as they are learning some essential job skills. Dr. Jenkins.
Members of the Board, that concludes your ESE update. There's certainly much more information and data that you can delve into. Certainly, we are extremely proud. I heard one person in the audience applaud. We are extremely proud of our graduation rate increase and so many other data points that we've been tracking on our scorecard for the School Board. We are certainly also proud of our universal screening and those percentages of students that have been identified for further assessment. And most certainly, we are pleased with the expansion of our transition sites, including two Orange County Public School sites out at facilities and here at the Ronald Blocker ELC. We are happy to certainly answer any questions you might have and listen to your discussion under the very capable leadership of Dr. Cartwright.
Well, we want to thank Dr. Cartwright for her capable leadership, and we can see the joy and excitement on her face. So we really appreciate this as a Board, and we appreciate you meeting with us and going over this with us. And Dr. Jenkins, the same to you, which it shows that you have an efficient staff that is doing exactly what the Board has requested and even more. So at this time, we will entertain on our speakers, let's miss Pam Gould.
Thank you for a great report. I love the transition site expansion and that skills-based training that they really get. I'm trying to, and it may be just because I'm overtired and I can't process numbers right now.
Certainly.
But I'm trying to see, do you have enough programs? Do you need more partners there to accommodate the students? Or does that, you mentioned it fluctuates. So could you describe that a little bit more?
Certainly, typically, our partnerships don't fluctuate. It's more of our enrollment because we're always looking for those students who may have completed their special diploma requirements, especially after like the first semester, and want to expand and reach out to them. We also have some students who have already finished their special diploma, but they may be in more of a career-based program, and now they're ready to transition into more of our structured transition programs off-site, no longer at a school site. We welcome having transition sites and having those partnerships with our business and community members because the more we can diversify that, the more opportunities that we are finding a program that is a better match for our students who are looking for those employability skills once they have aged out at age 22.
Do any of these turn into long-term employment opportunities for your students?
Absolutely, we're very proud of that. We include that information as students do go ahead, most often either age out or go ahead and get the job. We also include that information in your board updates so that you can see and have a tracking of how are we doing with our students and are they going long-term and finding and securing employment? But that is one of the things that we are greatly appreciative of with these individuals. I know working with the Marriott, for example, they compliment us a lot because they're like, okay, well, they come into the program, they're learning all these wonderful skills, and then we hire them, we don't have to train them because they're ready to go.
Right, that's fantastic. Thank you very much for the update.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gould, for getting that extra information from Dr. Cartwright on us. School Board Member, Rick Roach.
Thank you, Vicky, for the information. Could you kind of enlighten me a little bit about the, our ability to get to kids and test them in a timely manner? And I think a while back, we had some, we had a ratio of school psychologists to kids that was kind of alarming to me. And I'm just wondering, have we improved on that? Does this create a backlog? When's an opportune time to get kids tested? How early are they being referred? If that's, if you make sense of that question, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, I can. Gifted referrals can occur at any point in time during the school year. There are no particular seasons, as you might say, for a gifted referral. And that is as required by state. For us, we decide with our universal screening, we do try to do that towards the end of the year. And here is why. Oftentimes, it's because we are such a highly mobile district. We have two ways for students to qualify for gifted services. We not only have the IQ for them to qualify for gifted services, but we also have Plan B. And under Plan B, it does require the documentation in which to support, in addition to potentially a lower IQ number, for them to qualify for gifted services. And so that's why we most often do that in the spring, late spring, so that way, if there's a student who's moved in, we aren't missing them, as you might say, and trying to obtain that documentation for them. With that, also, Dr. Jenkins also expanded our psychology team this past year. When we went and expanded out beyond Title I schools to all schools, she also expanded the psychology staff in order to accommodate that.
Okay, and also, and not just the gifted kids, but I mean, the other kids as well, the other kids who are disabled. Is there a backlog on those referrals or?
We are required by state statute to have all evaluations done within 60 days. Now, these are 60 school days currently. And so we, and that is one of our state indicators that we are measured against. And so we meet that indicator.
And so then we have adequate staff to get to the state requirement, then?
At this point in time, as the state requirement is currently written, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Okay, with that in mind, we just thank you. Any other board members? I think you probably pretty much have your questions. Dr. Jenkins, did you have final remarks? I know you're very proud of the entire staff that worked on this with Dr. Cartwright.
I am. I am also extremely pleased. Dr. Cartwright has some parent advocates and others who work with her team to make sure we keep our parents involved. And we make a concerted effort to make certain they are not siloed. They are a part of our teaching and learning team as well. And so commendations due to the entire team.
And I believe some of them are here with you tonight.
Yes, ma'am, they are. They're to speak towards the proclamation that we're going to be.
That's right. Can we ask them to just stand so we will see who they are?
Absolutely. Our parent support team members.
Like, we don't know them, you know? Let's give them a round of applause because you've brought us a mighty long way, and we're very, very grateful, this Board is. Thank you so very much for that fine report, and we really thank you for it. Thank you, Dr. Cartwright and Dr. Jenkins. At this particular time, I'm going to ask if any individual would like to address any item on the consent or the non-consent agenda. You may do so by completing the appropriate yellow form at the board table by Mrs. McGill on the very end. The Chair will call for you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. Please understand that in accordance with the parliamentary procedure, this is your opportunity to testify before the board. It is not a question-and-answer session, nor is it an opportunity for you to engage in debate with the board. Staff is available to meet with you right after you speak, or should you want to wait and hold your questions, they're here to wait. And also, Board members as well. If you have questions, we will remain. And we're happy to meet with you, especially if you're in our district, okay? And even if you're not, we still would like to discuss your issues and concern. You will have three minutes to address the board, and we ask that you do not call any names of anyone when you are up at the podium. And we ask for the respect of those so that nobody's name would be called out without their names wanting to be called. If you have any schedule constraint at that particular time that you want to speak, if you will go to the end of the podium to Mrs. McGill and let her know, we will make accommodations for you so that you may need to get home or whatever it is or make another appointment. So at this particular moment, I'm going to ask Board members, if you notice, they will look down, they will look in the front, and a lot of times, they would look up. But we all have a monitor right in the front of us that we can see exactly what image is on the screen. So when you see us looking down, we're not just ignoring you, we're just trying to keep up with the meeting, just like you are. So at this particular time, Mrs. McGill, for the Board members, we only have one, and I think he's on his way arriving late, and that is our Chairman, Mr. Sublett. Okay, so let the record reflect that, and we thank you for it. We're going to ask that if there are any questions tonight, if you direct it through the Chair, be it me or the Chair when he walks in, that would include any questions we're going to ask you, not to just speak out in the audience, but to acknowledge the Chair and the director of questions. They will get answered much more quickly that way. So at this time, Dr. Jenkins, I understand, I see family members out there, and I think you have a lone, lone solo tonight. So we would like for you to introduce our newly appointed Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one present tonight for introduction. That is Isolda Antonio Fisher. She was the Assistant Principal at Ventura Elementary. She will be upon the Board's approval, Principal at Lake Como Elementary.
Good evening. I would like to thank Mr. Bill Sublett, Chairman, our Miss Nancy Robinson, our Board Member from District 6, Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and her staff. And I would also like to thank my family and friends and former colleagues who have come out to support me as well. Thank you very much.
Wow, that was a little short speech.
Hang on one second.
So with all that in mind.
Hang on one second, Jason. That was pretty fast. It is okay to actually introduce who's here.
It would be nice to do that.
Okay, my husband, Kevin.
Yes.
And my family from Tampa, who drove up from Tampa, my aunt, my sister, my mom.
And the godparents.
Betty Preston.
Yeah, the godparents.
And Mr. Preston. And I have staff members from Ventura.
Yes.
Where I was the Assistant Principal. And I also have staff members from Lake Como. So I'm very excited. Thank you very much.
Now, we can give that a round of applause. When you have the godparents here, did you introduce the baby? Okay, forgot the baby. Look at Jason running up and down. So what's the baby's name? Mason?
Yes.
All right, hi, Mason. Okay, we got a little mommy moment up here. Rick is outnumbered, but he's a father. At this time, I know that the School Board member, that maybe you're leaving would want to say something. And then also, the School Board member where you're going would like to say something. So Nancy Robinson? And then next would be Darryl Flynn.
Yes, Ms. Antonio Fisher, it's so nice to meet you, and I look forward to getting to know you a lot better as I come out to visit Lake Como. I include you in about the goldfish that is so precious. I know you've already met him. They have this beta fish that, I'm not kidding, anytime I go to school, it's the cleanest fish, little fish tank. And I said, gosh, they take such great care. So if they take that great care of goldfish, imagine what they do with our students. So Lake Como is a special place. The Comets are really excited to have you, and I look forward to getting to know you a lot better. Congratulations.
And I want to thank you for your work over at Ventura. Last year, you all worked so hard, and this year, they're working hard too, but we're able to bring up scores significantly. I was there to see that war room they had with all the data. So thank you for your hard work. I was there to see that war room they had with all the data, so thank you for your hard work in that, and I'm going to miss you being in District Two, but it's fabulous where you're going, so thank you.
Right, you're going to a great district.
Congratulations.
Okay, with that in mind, our chairman is not here to say it, but he always say, "Go out and get some ice cream." You're really going to have to go and get Mason. Mason, let us know if they got the ice cream for you. So let's give her a round of applause. So I know our chairman, he said he's not here, so you may be excused at this time, if you want to, unless you want to stay and remain, but congratulations to you on behalf of the board and the superintendent. We thank you, and your family members. And we thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Jenkins, with all that wonderful fameliness there, I love it, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are, Madam Chair. Item 602 and 1001 had revised attachments added. Item 701, the attachment was added after the release of the board book.
Okay, with that in mind, the vice chair finds cause to amend the agenda as requested. Was there a motion for the, in a second, for the adoption of the agenda?
No.
Okay, it has been moved, and second, it has been moved by Mrs. Flynn and school board member Nancy Robinson, that the agenda be amended with changes. All those in favor, I'm going to ask you to say aye.
Aye.
And those opposes, nay. And the ayes have it, so we have a seven vote there, okay? With one absent, and on the way. Okay, with that in mind, we had no public hearings, Madam Superintendent, and you just approved your consent agenda, so with all that in mind, I do have a speaker that is in favor of an issue that she wants to bring, and I don't want to get the name incorrect. I think it's Ms. Leela Lila. Oh, all righty, that's Ms. Bryhon. Please come up, we love you.
Thank you so much.
Just, we're going to ask for the record, if you give your name and address.
My name is Leela Bryhon. My address is 3747 Quando Circle, Bel Al Florida, 32812.
Yes. Great parents at Oak Ridge.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you Superintendent Jenkins, Chairman Sublett, Ms. Gordon, and board members for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Before I begin, I just want to say my congratulations to all of you for winning the Broad Prize. Yeah. I'm a parent of four children, three of whom with disabilities. I am also a member of the ESE Parent Support Team, representing the Southeast Learning Community. Years ago, I had the luxury to quit my job and dedicate all my time and effort to take care of my children. When my son was six, we learned that he had autism, and that my unborn daughter was going to have many physical problems. At the same time, we were introduced to the world of dyslexia when my oldest daughter was diagnosed. Being a mother with no idea of any, to any of those disabilities, and having children who were just starting their education in public schools made life so overwhelming for my husband and I. Lucky for us, we had great support from school staff and teachers at that time, which made it much easier to deal with those issues, and my children were able to receive a very good education. I have learned so much during the past 12 years dealing with all these issues, and I had seen throughout those years how the school board had dealt with the issue of disabilities by putting it center stage for school to deal with, and how the accomplishment of disabled students have become increasingly important for school as a critical measurement tool for the success of the district in general. The number of disabled students is growing so fast, and parents are getting so overwhelmed with the task at hand. When my son was diagnosed with autism 12 years ago, there was one autistic child out of 200. Now, the data shows one child out of 68 is autistic. The board has supported us, the parents, by providing services in school throughout the district, creating the parent support team and launching disability awareness weeks to help educate and alert other students and parents to the changes in special education that are happening in our schools and our communities. Despite all those wonderful efforts, students at our schools are still not completely aware of what's going on, and some of them are still bullying and harassing disabled students at their schools. Parents and educators find themselves still needing to explain to students that those children are not weird but disabled, and are trying to deal with so many health and mental issues on a daily basis. Teachers need support in learning, in learning about clear and hidden disabilities, how to serve students with disabilities, and how to explain disabilities to all students in their classrooms. Having Pulse every year is a great and very helpful way to connect with the community, and having our team out in the learning community is so valuable to so many, to so many families, but there are still many parents that we cannot reach. Therefore, celebrating disability history in Awareness Week is a great way for Orange County Public Schools to reach out to more parents while trying to give them a helping hand and make their children's lives a bit easier in the process. As a parent who went through out so many obstacles with my children, I can assure you that parents of disabled children are very appreciative to all of your great effort. Hearing about opportunities for help and guidance from educators and parents like them make it reassuring, comforting, and effective, because it's coming from people who know what needs to be done and how it should be done. I urge OCPS board member to continue support having Disability History and Awareness Week in our schools as a tool to help all disabled students, parents, and our schools, because the more we educate the community, the easier it will be to deal with disability, and better teachers can teach in classroom, and better our students can perform, and ultimately, the better our schools can succeed. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. With that in mind, for supporting the disability and the Awareness Week for us, we thank you so very much, Ms. Bryhon. Thank you for that wonderful. And now, I'm hearing that, I'm asking for request approval of the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, okay, it is moved by school board member Nancy Robinson, and second by school board member Rick Roach, that the consent agenda be approved. All those in favor, will you please say so by saying aye?
Aye.
Those not in favor, nay. The ayes have it, and it's seven. Thank you so very much, Dr. Jenkins and General Counsel. Thank you. So it is passed, so you all could go home. But Dr. Jenkins said you have to stay. Oh, thank you so very much, staff. Thank you, board members. With that in mind, I'm going to ask the superintendent for her information at this time, and if you could give us the information on what took place in New York City on yesterday. Yeah, we need a little rum roll here.
Orange County Public Schools was recognized as a co-winner for the Broad Prize for Urban We have, I have to tell you, we have had several opportunities, even on a national media level, to give some comments to folks asking questions about Orange County Public Schools. I will tell you just a couple of things I've mentioned repeatedly, hopefully it will show up in print. Couple of things I've mentioned, a strong and very, and high-performing, high-functioning school board, I think, is critical to our success, and I don't just say that to be saying it, because we know full well that if there is division among a governing body and division between the CEO and the governing body, it certainly makes progress difficult. And so I have repeatedly shared with reporters that we have a high-functioning school board, and that we have a vision and a strategic plan that was not created by the CEO, nor created separately by the school board, but that was jointly created by both entities. And so that helps us have continuity of leadership and certainly helps us keep our momentum going. The analogy we've used before is a train, a freight train, or a passenger train for that matter, trying to make its way up an incline and having to stop repeatedly certainly hinders the momentum. And so Alvin Wilbanks actually did a joint interview through Modern Technology this afternoon with Reuters, I believe it was. I'm sorry, it was Bloomberg, and he concurred, well, Alvin Wilbanks has been in Gwinnett for 18 years, and his board members range from 42 years on the board, and the baby on the board is 13 years, I believe. And so he certainly concurs with that notion of continuity to really help school districts accomplish what they need to accomplish. Then I also mentioned to them, we have a phenomenal leadership team, but our work is in the classroom. Principals and teachers make that work happen every day, and so we're very appreciative to them, that the Broad Prize is thanks to their efforts. And then I always mention that our community has been extremely supportive. While others may have been suffering during an economic downturn, our community stepped up and helped us to maintain our funding levels. And so we believe all of those put together with the centralization of curriculum and assessment and our professional development has helped us reach that level of success. I am also very clear that we have not accomplished the ultimate, that we have miles to go, and that we look forward to having significant and greater accomplishments in the future. Let me also mention, since Madam Chair gave me an opportunity, I also want to mention, I have on my black and gold today because President Hitt gave his State of the University address this morning at Church Street Station, and we are very pleased to share with you. We've had conversations. He mentioned specifically that the university will be, and Mr. Roach was at that breakfast with me as well, mentioned that the University of Central Florida is looking forward to and committed to partnering with Orange County Public Schools in Valencia to help make sure our children at the up-and-coming new downtown K8 will have significant opportunities for college education. So we were pleased to hear that announcement this morning as well. There'll be more to come, bigger announcements to come, but wanted to share with the school board, President Hitt did make that part of his speech this morning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Superintendent, let's give the chairman a round of applause, because he represented us well in New York also.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Gordon.
Okay, you did, you represented us well.
I was unexpected, but thank you. Sorry I was late. I was a little bit too aggressive in my flight. Ms. Gould or Mrs. Robinson?
Mrs. Robinson.
I just wanted to follow up on the discussion of the Broad Prize and our co-win. Every time I was asked yesterday what our special sauce, that was what two different people asked me, what our special sauce was that made us such a wonderful school district, I always started out by complimenting our amazing leadership. Dr. Jenkins, you've done a really great job, and I told them, one of the things that I think, you just have a laser focus on student achievement, and every person you've put in place underneath you, your cabinet, every principal that you put into place, they're just amazing. You bring in great talent, and so I wanted to put it back at you. You've tried to put it on us, but really, you're the lady with the vision, and we really appreciate you, so congratulations to you. Thank you.
Ms. Gould.
Well, I concur, but I wanted to address the aha I had at the meeting yesterday, which was really how that selection process is normally narrowed down, and the exception because of the quality for this year, which is, they review 74 districts normally, they get to five to seven finalists normally, there were only two, and the data was so compelling for the two that this is the first time ever that both were awarded. So I got chills when they were explaining that yesterday, because I really didn't understand the scope and breadth of that entire process, having never been through that before. So not only is the team to be congratulated, but we realize also from the discussion yesterday that there is still a long way to go to achieve our dream and vision, but we are so on the right path with the right leadership and continue to evolve it, and I'm just thrilled to be here at this time with this team, so thank you.
Amen. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate the superintendent and this entire staff for the hard work you've done. I mean, from the top on down to teachers and staff and faculty, I mean, it's just incredible what we've accomplished, and to, you know, continue the thoughts of Mrs. Gould, we were the first time nominated and won, and are sharing the stage with a county that's won it once and continued...
This is the third time?
This is the second time, I think, and have continued it all these years, so, you know, we're in very, very high company. I wanted to publicly congratulate Gwinnett County, and I was going to suggest that we write a letter and all sign it, and congratulating, and congratulating them, and, well, I was going to ask if we were sending the oranges, I think we should, but...
We have already made that commitment to send the care package. Chairman was there that night at dinner. Before we even knew the announcement, we committed to sending it.
It was a really remarkable experience, I have to say. The whole presentation, the speakers, I got to shake a prime minister's hand. I just thought it was just a remarkable morning, and so, again, I just want to congratulate OCPS and all the work that you all do. I'm very proud to be a part of this group and feel very fortunate to be here at this moment.
Ms. Cadel.
Well, everyone's pretty much said what I was going to say, except that, for those of us who were lucky enough to be able to stay last night, thanks to Ms. Robinson's generosity and the fact that Norm Lewis was one of her classmates, together with her husband, it was like Bill and then Norm, and then Nancy graduated from Edgewater, we had the opportunity to go see Phantom of the Opera. And Mr. Dr. Armbruster, I was reminded when you played the auctioneer at Phantom of the Opera at university, the first year you were there, so for those of you I couldn't whisper to last night, he was the auctioneer in the university high school presentation of Phantom. But, you know, you sit there and you see one of ours, who did not go through a performing arts magnet, who just kind of sang in the choir at Edgewater and sang in the choir at church, and had a passion for theater, and we had the opportunity to go backstage with him, and when you hear his story, and he tells you of working at the Mark Twain Dinner Theater, and then Scott Howitt pointed out that he's a graduate of Seminole State also, and so he has huge ties here in Orange County, and, you know, we've started talking about what our 145th year is going to look like, and who we're going to recognize, and what the categories are, and I can't wait to see this journey that we're on, because there are some phenomenal graduates who have gone on to do wonderful things in this world, not just in this nation or here in this community. And so it was really, it was really a nice way to end, to see one of our guys, who, we had listened to the panel discussion on minorities in America, and are we closing the achievement gap for them, and are we treating them fairly, and to see Norm as the first African-American Phantom there, and then to go back and roll the pages back, two of the Phantoms have been Edgewater High School graduates, because the original Phantom was Davis Gaines...
Close second.
Second, sorry. Sorry, second. Longest-running, so, but two, two Edgewater High School graduates, at no performing arts magnet, who managed to be able to, to go to great success. So it was a wonderful day. Tony Blair was amazing in his conversation and his talk, and the young man, who is, who know, I didn't understand what kind of scientist he was, but I'm hoping that we can use that vignette somehow to encourage our young people who perhaps would be wondering if they would qualify for this, because I know that when Governor Scott came to Colonial, and Dr. Jenkins was there, and Ms. Flynn was there, and I was there, I'm not sure if anybody else was there, but there were a lot of children who told a story very similar to what this young man told about the fact that they had immigrated here, they don't necessarily qualify for bright futures, and they don't qualify for this or that, but they've got great grade point averages, and they're first generations that are going to college. point averages, and they're first generations that are going to college. A lot of them were first generation, graduating from high school. So, what this award will be able to do for those children's lives, you know, we need to figure out how to stay in touch with them. That is going to be the key. We have to figure out, how do we keep in touch with these young people? Because where are they going to be in five or 10 years? And what door opened because of the generosity of the Broads and the hard work of this entire district from top to bottom.
Ms. Gordon.
Well, thank you. Okay, that is just wonderful. Basically, I think you all know, I had a, I just hit the road running. I enjoyed myself just immensely. My part was the, I had an opportunity to, never met Tony Blair, but was very impressed with him as a panelist, but had worked with the former mayor of Los Angeles, and I cracked up laughing when he mentioned Caesar Chavez, because when he said he marched with Caesar, I was in that same march in California with him, and I reminded him of it. He was a little smaller, he was a little younger than me at that time, but I remember him being very Middleton, but they also came to Tampa, and they came to Orlando, and we picketed the Coca-Cola and the grapes industry here in Florida. So, I thought that was something, when he mentioned that he had marched with Caesar. My kids at school crack up, because when they hear that we marched with Martin Luther King, they crack up. Caesar's even, since this is the month we are celebrating Hispanic Month, and we're honoring the Hispanic and African-American students of color, the part that really just energized me, I had worked with Kennedy before in the Harlem. I brought back a major report to this board, in which the newspaper had said I had gone on a fruitless trip, and it amazed me, as they spoke on yesterday, everything that we brought back to this board and what we did that led us to the 50th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act, and the 60th anniversary of the landmark of Brown versus Board of Education, which was a Supreme Court decision that helped us to get out of that kind of status and to acclaim unitary status and to work with educating children of color. I think it was a provocative panel discussion. There were candid conversations. We agreed with some and didn't agree with all of it, because, you know, they are kind of far-fetched, and there are reforms, but one thing that Broke acknowledged, they acknowledged a different type of reforms. And if they feel that that reform is going to help to educate a child of color, then they feel that American progress is going to make it, and that all children, and that's what I saw in Gwinnett County and Orange County, that all children, regardless of their nationality, regardless of their religion, regardless of their race, that they will receive a world-class education. And the part that touched me the most with them is that they provided the money for children to receive this world-class education. So, I was really impressed. Well, I go back and forth to the Harlem Zone. I did get an opportunity to go back down there, and the young lady that helps with that zone is from Leesburg, from Leesburg, Florida. So, a lot of Floridians are working within that venue, so I had an opportunity to go back down there and to meet with them. But, and I think we said, like the mayor from California, I think he's opened up his own school, it appears as if he's done that now, and he's working with parents. And I think that this board has said it over and over, and when Dr. Jenkins came in with the parent academy, I think that we were far ahead of ourselves. When we put that parent academy, and it gets me, if any school is out there trying to run a parent academy without the school board initiative from the superintendent of running a parent academy, I think they're missing the boat, because if you're not connecting with that, everybody said that yesterday. And one thing that I did pick up, it didn't matter what kind of principal, the color of that principal that you sent into that school, they love children of color, those children are going to make it. And I think that that was the thing, it wasn't about the money, paying more, it would help, but actually just loving the children and looking at the children for what they are. I would just like to ask those that did take the trip, if you would just stand so we can just see who you are that took off and took the trip with us, will you stand to back Dr. Jenkins and the school board? That made us feel real good. So, if you were on that trip to New York, will you just stand so we can just thank you for that? Because I think for you to break away from your real busy schedule, and then let's salute those that stayed here in the building and held it down and made us look good. We really thank you. But now, I know I did ask, Dr. Jenkins had already made an appointment at the dinner, at the dinner table, but I had asked, I had sent a little email to the superintendent, and he had given her the challenge. I had not seen our challenge until Nancy told me about our oranges, that we have to make sure our oranges look orange. When we do send them, she told us, she said, "Our oranges look a little yellow." So, Dr. Jenkins said she's going to handle that. We color our fruit in Florida. But I'm looking for the peanuts, I'm really looking forward to it. But I would like for us, I know this is going to be hard, but I would like for us to get with Dylan Thomas, and at our next meeting, get in the front of our ELC building, Ronald Block ELC, and I know we can't do our little umbrellas, but it would be nice if we had our little umbrellas up in Florida, or we just stand up and send back to Eli Broke a great big thank you with all of their little orange umbrellas, since it's orange. So, I would like to see us do that, and if we could make that arrangement in the front of our ELC, so as many as we can, or we can't put the umbrella up here, I'm from South Carolina. But I would love to see us do that. But I want to say that Dr. Jenkins and I, I saw her and Mr. Blocker, Mary Kay and I ended up getting to be very good friends. We had known each other on the telephone, because my nephew graduated from Gwinnett County, one of the high schools in her district, and we finally got a chance to meet each other, and that's why you saw us talking back and forth. But I wanted you to know, I was so impressed with their, with the board members and the age of the board members and their love for children of color. That really amazed me, the love that they had for the children of color. So, if we could, Edith Broke was a joy to meet. I saw Dr. Jenkins talking with her and Mr. Blocker, but we got an opportunity, Mary Kay and I got an opportunity to go right over and just start a conversation, and she said, "You all want to take a picture with me?" And we said, "Of course we do." And she just thought that that was something else, and then I said, "Dr. Jenkins, she's going out the building by herself." She said she owns the whole program, so she can do that. But I just thought that a lady of their caliber, they're in their 80s, and they're still giving their life and giving to children. So, I would like for us to get together and send a thank you to the Eli Broke Entire Foundation, and do something with our little orange umbrellas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mr. Roach.
I agree with all the winning components here tonight, but I think we want to, I want to start out with the 13,000 people that this would not have happened, that we'd not had teachers, teachers pull off this particular, you know, and I think that can't be said enough. So, I am very proud of the Orange County Public School teachers who worked very, very hard to make all these goals and aspirations become a reality. And board members, I want to throw in just a little bit of history, because this takes me back a little bit, as to the seed that I think was dropped, and I believe it was dropped probably by three of us on this board, Cadle, Roach, and Cadle, Roach, and Gordon. And it goes back, I'm going to say nine years ago, I was thinking like six, nine years ago, this board sat down and decided to hire some consultants to make us a new strategic plan, and that's what we still have today. And I recall the most contentious discussion, long discussion, was on the vision statement, because it had to do with something powerful, something compelling, something maybe even tough to reach. And so, we talked, and I recall this being a long time discussion, hours maybe, and I'll tell you what the sticking point was. Daryl was there, okay, excuse me.
Come on the board.
You just come on, then you were, there were four of us there, and we agreed finally to be the top producer of successful students, period. That's worth stopped. That's worth stopped. The "In the Nation" was the sticking point. And I remember Board Member Martin was saying, "But how would we know we were tops in the nation?" And the discussion went by, well, how do you know you're number one with all the districts? And I think we finally came to the agreement, it doesn't matter how we know, we just need to put "In the Nation." We need to put it in there, and then let the chips fall as they may. And so, I looked at, that's what really hit me, and my chill bumps came on the announcement when I attached those nine years together, and saw that little tiny seed blossom by the other four board members that are on the board now. With your help, we were able to pull that. And I think I give everybody credit for that, but that was, that was a great connection, and I'll have you know, that was my personal feeling that day.
And there we are. In the nation, you're right.
Ms. Moore.
You know, Mr. Roach, I was thinking of you. I'm glad I got to go after, you know, all the years everybody's, you know, sort of laughed and commented and hit about "Best of the Nation," and then you're retiring, and so we did, you know, we did it. It's pretty exciting. So, actually, that mission statement actually had a way to succeed and a path that we followed. I just wanted to read, since you all made such wonderful comments, I wanted to read from the profile that the Broad Prize said about us, about the finalists, because we all said a lot of wonderful things about a trip, but I thought it would be nice to end and be reminded of what we really, what this district has accomplished in order to earn that award. And the first was in student achievement, that a greater percentage of Black students reach advanced academic levels in Orange County than in other districts in Florida. Orange County narrowed income and ethnic achievement gaps. Orange County raised achievement among low-income middle school students. Orange County's college readiness has improved. The district consistently assesses student learning and makes sure teachers and administrators have the right resources and supports to use data to improve instruction. The district supports teachers by helping them improve their skills through tailored professional development and a network of mentors and coaches. The district evaluates teachers to support their growth and deliver rigorous instruction to all students. The district has effective and ambitious leadership. The district's strategic plan is forward-thinking and visionary. And final category, the district has a transparent and efficient budget process that protects the core vision of educating students to the highest level. And then under that, you could tell it was sort of the end, where they commented on some innovative and creative things that we do that other districts don't participate in. They liked, these are really little things, but they were impressed with that comprehensive and they said, "Easy-to-understand pocket budget guide," you know, and that's really the impetus and the effort we've put into our public relations department. Let's see, they were impressed about the low administrative costs per student, so that we can spend 80% of our budget on teaching, learning, and counseling for students. And then, they really liked, I see Ms. Pedrazia's out there, that they commented about the district, and of course, this was your baby, Mr. Chair, the district created a philanthropic foundation, and that this unusual, and they called it "Unusual Initiative," has already yielded success, and it talked about some of those successes, so that strategic plan really factored into, you know, why we were chosen. So, I just had what Mrs., I think it was Mrs. Cadle was talking about, the 145th, and when I met with Ms. Pedrazia the other day, I love reading history books, I have a whole wall, if you've ever been in my house, of old history books, and I'd actually read this a number of years ago, and I'm quite interested in it, because the first superintendent is from the Popco. And so, and Ms. Flynn and I flew on the airplane, and we were reading this book all the way up to New York, and we went, "Well, darn, it stops in 1990." It's, I mean, there is nothing in here after 1990. So, I just wanted to put it out, wouldn't it be nice to reprint this book with up to the point of winning the Broad Foundation and have it in time for our celebration? Because it seems like it'd be really a neat thing to end the book, not that, you know, tell future books, of course, there'll be greater and higher places to go, but at this point, to end on a Broad Award, so, prize. So, anyway, that was just my little suggestion, I'm not a, you got that idea? But what we're saying is, it's kind of tough to end at 1990. Okay, well, I get some thumbs up. So, anyway, that would be a great project, but it was a great tribute, I am sure, for all of us serving on this board, and that experience in New York is probably maybe one of the highlights that we'll all remember, you know, so I appreciate being there with all of you, and I wish we could have brought every teacher and every student with us, so, and when we all talk about and share our pictures, I think it's important that they see, so they know how much we wish we could have had them all in that little building. But it didn't seem like we could fit that many more people in New York City, it was a little crowded.
You know, and we have referred to it, but it was great having Mr. Blocker there, because, you know, he is so modest, and he was like, well, when Superintendent Jenkins asked me for the third time, I knew I better come. But he did lay some of the groundwork, a lot of the groundwork for this, and he helped build a lot of the leadership team and the stability that we have. So, it was just really special to have him there and for them to call him up and have his picture taken with the leaders who were there. So, Mr. Blocker, thanks for taking the time to be there, because we lead in a building that's named after you, that's on a street that's named after you, and it just, there would have been a piece of the team missing if he hadn't been there. So, it was just very special to spend time with him and to be able to recognize his 12 years of leadership, too.
Ms. Gould.
I was, I don't want to keep going, because I know we're all tired, but I wanted to share that I had taken my 20-year-old son, who had graduated in 2013 from Olympia, with us yesterday, and not just to enjoy New York, but I really wanted him to experience the Broad, the end of the Broad journey, and hear the discussion yesterday among those national and international leaders on education and the importance of education, because, you know, I concur with Ms. Moore, it's too bad we couldn't take every student, especially every high school student, to really hear the kinds of discussions that are out there around some of the issues they face every day. And he had some really unique perspectives, and one of the things, and I'd be happy to share, the texturing as we were talking, as the discussion was going on, as he was commenting, and I was answering questions, but especially around discipline when that came up, and the opinion, in his opinion, and I would love to have a focus group, maybe with recent graduates and kids in school about that discipline issue, because he talked about not letting kids off the hook, but further accountability for discipline, and in his words, not giving kids a vacation by suspending them for a short period of time, but the restorative justice, and Mrs. Gordon and I were talking about it after I shared the texturing with her yesterday. But they want that mutual accountability, which, knowing my son the way that I do, kind of shocked me, to have him really come back to me and said, you know, "You shouldn't let us off the hook, we should be accountable. It should be something harder. It should be something more, we have to learn, a higher expectation at the end of the day, because otherwise, it's like, well, in the moment, I'm like, okay, I get out of school. I did something wrong, and I get out of school." So, that's a little off track, but it just was so thought-provoking for this young man to hear that. I wish there was a way that we could generate that kind of conversation with our students to be really part of the process a little bit more, and that was kind of exciting for me on a personal level. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, it appears I got back for the most important part of the meeting, so I'm glad. Aren't victory laps great? I think it's, they're awesome. So Dylan, I don't know if you're listening, but we need to do a thank you letter to Granite County, congratulatory letter. And I love the idea, Mrs. Gordon, about the umbrellas. And Ms. Flynn, I think that would be awesome to do that in front. And maybe we could, we get a flag. Do we get a flag for every school, Dr. Jenkins? Wouldn't it be cool to do the umbrellas out front with everybody we have at the ELC if we can get a couple hundred of those umbrellas and do the flag raising at the same time? And I don't know if we could do a simultaneous flag raising around the district at all 188 schools, but I think that would be a really cool thing that the Brode Foundation would love, if we could do, say, on a Tuesday morning at 8:00 or whatever, raise a flag at every OCPS school at the same time, something like that, and then update the history book as well. Yeah, I wanted to throw in my two cents to, and I'll be very brief, but, you know, sometimes I think we sit up here and, you know, if you equate this to the way our country's run and where our militaries run, you know, we're sort of the president's cabinet, and then we've got the general out there leading the effort for us, and Barbara Jenkins. But at the end of the day, it's easy for us to set the strategic goals. It's got to be executed by the troops. So those troops in my mind are the 192,000 Orange County Public Schools students and their families. So I want to thank them first and foremost because a lot has been foisted on them by the state, by the country, and by us, OCPS, with our high expectations over the last decade. And they continually step up to the plate, and they're the ones who have to put in the blood, sweat, and tears and the long hours and the hard work in the study. I also want to thank our teachers. I could not agree more, not just the teachers, but our entire team of 23,000 employees, because they all are single-minded in their mission for Orange County Public Schools to be the top producer of successful students in the country. And I'm very, very aware of the fact that, even though it's sometimes unsaid, I think anybody down in the trenches sometimes thinks, you know, "It's great for you guys to set these goals, but we're the ones who have to execute them," and they have really made us look terrific. And yesterday, I was at the ceremony thinking, you know, "I wish we could have brought all 13,000 teachers up there and all 180,000 students." This is going to sound odd, Lauren, I'm glad you haven't left. We actually, I know we don't always think it in this market, but we are treated very, very fairly by the media. We get wonderfully even-handed coverage. Sometimes it's constructively critical, and it needs to be, and that's the job of the fourth estate, or that's the job of the press, and we would be in a poorer nation if we didn't have the press looking over our shoulder. But we also get a lot of positive stories, not only out of the Sentinel, but out of our local news stations, out of the radio stations. And I can remember a time in this community, and I bet a bunch of you all can as well, when we couldn't buy a positive story about Orange County Public Schools. And that hasn't been the case the last five or six years. So I want to thank the media for giving us fair, balanced coverage. It matters. And I want to thank our community, and then I'm going to wrap up and say, you know, our community, I don't know if you all perceive it this way, but I had somebody from the Brode Foundation ask me what our magic formula was. And I said, you know, "I'm not sure exactly why it happened, but this community's leadership," and by leadership, I don't just mean the business leaders, I mean the neighborhood leaders, the community activists, the political leaders, the business community. They decided over a decade ago, in my mind, it happened, and I've lived here 28 years or so, in my mind, it happened in the early 2000s. They decided that we needed to make a commitment to our public schools, and we needed a high-quality public school system. And both the leadership of this community and the voters of this community have stepped up to the plate over the last 10 years. And I am convinced, we would not have been up there yesterday if the voters of this community had not stepped up, not once, not twice, but now three times in the last 12 years to give our kids quality facilities, the resources that they need in those facilities, and the ability to ride out the recession without draconian cuts. And folks love to say, you know, that money doesn't matter, and, you know, you don't need money to get a great education, but actually, it does matter. And there was actually a great story last week in one of the papers, I think it was in the Wall Street Journal, it was about the correlation between per-student funding and public school system funding and the quality, the education being delivered, especially in urban districts with diverse populations. So our community, I think, needs to be thanked. And really, if I had to get it down to one thing, I would say would be the drive of this community to have a high-quality public school system. Last thing I want to say is, we do have a general, and we have a great team underneath her. So I want to thank all of you all in this room, and everybody on your cabinet, everybody in senior administrative leadership. Again, it's not lost on me, sometimes I have a hard time looking you all in the eye. We set these lofty strategic goals, but then you all have to go out there and execute them. But one thing I think is wonderful is that in my four years on the board, starting with Mr. Blocker, but really accelerated under Dr. Jenkins, is it's been wonderful that I feel like, from the board, and I think this board, I think you all deserve a lot of credit, especially those of you all who've been around for a while, like Ms. Kadel and Mr. Roach, and Ms. Flynn, and Mrs. Gordon, who have been on the board for a long time. But we have a shared vision. And that shared vision, you know, you can give it a lot of words, but at the end of the day, it's a commitment to excellence and to not just be a good public school system, to not just get by, but to be the best public school system in the country. And that filters down, and it filters down not only through Dr. Jenkins' cabinet, but all the way down to the principals and all the way down into the teachers in the school and the students. And I want to thank you especially, I, we all gave Dr. Jenkins her reviews the other day, and by the way, they're superlative, you know, and we're going to go over that at the retreat a little bit, but it was exceedingly good review, as it should have been. But I, one thing I commended you on, Dr. Jenkins, and I think I probably speak for the entire board when I say this, is your personnel decisions have almost been, without exception, excellent, if not brilliant. I mean, every personnel move I've watched you make over three years has been terrific, almost without exception, and that matters at all levels of our organization. So kudos to you and to your team. Thank you all for all your hard work. We really appreciate it immensely. Mrs. Gordon, bring us in for a lamp on this.
Well, you know what? I'm excited. I go back now and remember when Dr. Jenkins came here, and I think I got to go back to what Joey stated and what you were saying. I took my name off because you did such a great job. But I want to go back to what Joey stated. I thank Mr. Blocker, being there, he said he did not want to take any of the accolades away from Dr. Jenkins, but let me tell you something, they went in as a team. The data, the data that was used basically stemmed from her leadership under his leadership. And what he did, he said, "The best decision that I believe that I made is when I moved her out of one position and catapulted her to the one that brought her to where she is right now." And I think, as he, we were walking the streets of New York, and that sounds great. We were just talking about that, and he felt that. But I told him, I said, "I looked at Dr. Jenkins as they were making the announcement, and I saw Ron's entire shoulder kind of bent in." And I said, "Oh, my God, he won't have a shoulder, because Dr. Jenkins is leaning so hard on it before the announcement." She said, "You didn't see me squeezing his arm." But I want to say that he brought us our own. She is Orange County's, she's Orange County, I don't want to say baby, but that she came to us as a baby, pretty much. And just to hear him talk about how he felt he didn't leave us as a board stranded. And by moving her from one position to another position, he said it was a method to his madness. And for Joey to come up and bring that up, and little did you know, that was the last conversation that we had in New York as he was going back to his room to do more work. But he felt honored and like, and they gave him the honor, because they know that we could not have gotten there without both of them. He had the knowledge and the know, he listened to this board when we said, "Put the Abbott into every school, put the magnets in." That was a hard thing to do, because he looked at us and said, "Well, how am I going to get these advanced placements? How am I going to do it?" We said, "You've got to find a way to do it. Just tell us how you want it done, and this board will see to it." But I think his icing on his cake, everybody needs somebody that they know, that they mentored, and they made it to the top. And so, Dr. Jenkins, we say to you, you have been his shining armor, because we said, "Are you sure? Are you sure of this?" And he said, "I'm positive." And because we had Emma, and we knew that Emma was a security person for him. You can tell Emma things and never, ever hear it again. And I think that this board built that relationship with Emma, but when Dr. Jenkins came, it was just a little bit higher, and Dr. Blocker knew it, and I thank Joey for bringing it up, and Mr. Chairman for you mentioning it. It has just been a great, a great ride to the top. So we made it for our minority students, and now we're going to make it for all. Thank you so very much.
Ms. Gould.
Mine's not old, because when you were talking, it reminded me that very seldom do we thank the legislature around here. But we do need to thank the legislature for the one mil. Because the way you could sell the one mil was when we chose not to use the quarter mil that we could have supermajority, and we didn't. And so we had to send $3 million to Tallahassee that year, because they were equalizing. And so we were trying to protect our pennies, and the way we got paid back was to send a $3 million check. So it was very easy to go out to the community and say, you know, "We went ahead and did that quarter mil the next time," because then they couldn't ask us for $3 million because we had assessed it. And so it was one of those things, when you talk about the community saying, "We want to protect our children," you know, that was one of the easiest things to tell. And to this day, even with the, even with the sales tax, when I was out talking, I could say, "Tallahassee can't touch this." We have, we have, we have things in place to make sure your money stays right here, and you can see it's being spent right here for your children and grandchildren and nieces and nephews. So, you know, when you were talking about how this community has stepped up, I think one of the things that made it the easiest for the school board to make that decision was when we had to send $3 million, we were trying to protect to Tallahassee, and we're like, "We're not going to do that anymore. We want the money here, to stay here in Orange County." So to the community, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well said. All right, are, I think, are we at, have we done reports by general counsel yet? Mr. Rodriguez. No report, all right. Dr. Jenkins. You gave yours, okay. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
None.
None, okay. Awesome. Be still, my heart. We are tired. Here's the work session schedule. Board retreat's coming up, that's the next thing. Get your topics in, I'll be building the agenda this week and running it by you all. So get your topics in if they're not already in. Then we have some important work sessions coming up. I'll just let you all look at the list. Any questions or comments on the work session schedule? We added some of the ones that folks have asked us to add that we had omitted from the last one. So if we're missing anything that we need to tackle, let us know. Okay? All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Yes, Ms. Moore.
I just wanted to call your attention to a note in the board update that this Saturday night at 7:00 PM, PBS is doing a special on the extra hour of instruction in Orange County, and has pulled data and came to town and did an interview with Dr. Schuler and principal from Wheatley. And they even actually took the film crew and went out into the community to see how the residents supported the school. And so it's this Saturday night on PBS from 7:00 to 8:00. It's about a, I think, an eight-minute segment that features Phyllis Wheatley Elementary and the fact they even have an interview by Senator David Simmons.
Is it a locally-produced program, or is it a national?
No, it's national.
Really? This Saturday night?
It's Saturday night, 7:00 to 8:00.
Oh, I'll have to watch that, thank you. Earth, heads up. All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, everybody go and get some rest.
All right, where'd it go?